Good evening, welcome to the March sixteenth Board of Selectmen meeting, which is being audio and video recorded. If you'd please stand and join us for the official.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. For Verizon, I believe.
National Grid.
National Grid. All right, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter one sixty-six, Section twenty-two, on Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty P M. on the following petition submitted by the Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon, New England Incorporated, Plan Number three zero three seven three seven nine one, to install a stub pole replacing tree guy supporting pole number twenty-nine located at East Center Street, West Bridgewater. The public hearing will be held in the Town Hall, Eldonoff Mariah Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, second floor, six sixty-five North Main Street, West Bridgewater. Plans and petitions available for you in the Selectmen's office. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
All right, do you want to tell us what you're doing?
Yeah, my name is Thomas Hoven. I'm here on behalf of National Grid. I'm sure you're familiar with an old practice that we do not do the tree guy. And there's a dead tree currently at the property of two fifty East Center that's holding pole twenty-nine in place.
Yes.
So in lieu of the rotten tree, we're gonna put a stub pole in the back anchor just to support that pole standing there.
Yeah, so we provided a picture so you can see it, so.
Did we take that tree down? Or are we? Is that why? The town?
It needs to come down. But once that wire is gone, then it can completely come down.
Yeah, so all we did was we just, we just, I gave you a picture. You could see the pole is on the right. It goes across the road. It's attached to the dead tree right now. So they'll put a stub pole there. We'll be responsible for the tree. And if you wanted to see what it's gonna look like, then if you just looked in the other direction, there's a guy wire that goes across and it goes over to that stub pole right there and it anchors the pole. So that's, it looks like they're gonna be duplicating the same for the previous pole.
Correct. Pretty boring day.
No, very interesting.
Any questions, comments?
No.
No, no?
And there's public hearings, sorry, off to the public. Is there a motion to postpone the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. And is there a motion to approve the petition?
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for yours. You got it.
All right, everyone?
You too.
Ben, if you want to do yours, if you want to do your inter clerk.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's introduce Miley. She will be our new access coordinator, part-time at Westbridge Water Media Access Media. She'll be helping out with coverage of meetings. She'll be able to cover meetings, coverage of sports, and other access programs. She comes, she is a former intern at the TV studio, graduating class of twenty seventeen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, twenty eighteen. So she's familiar with the school, the town, and the studio, and all the equipment. We, on Thursday, the board approved our contract, so we're just here to get approval from the board. Do you guys stand and ask?
Not really.
All right, well, welcome and congratulations. Um, are there any questions or anyone?
No, congratulations. Welcome to the team.
All right, so is there a motion to ratify Miley's contract?
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations, Maya.
You too.
You too. Southeastern, are you waiting for anyone else or are you good?
Just myself.
All right, come on down. We've all been through this a number of times, so I think you can give us an abbreviated version.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, feel free to stop me or let me know if you have any questions. Everyone gets the budget that was sent, it was sent over.
I'm sure it looks like it's here on page twelve.
It is, it's in the packet.
All right, perfect. So I'll just start quickly with, the budget was approved two weeks ago by the school committee, so it is an approved budget for FY twenty-three. Our foundation budget is thirty-two million, three sixty-two, eight thirteen. Our regional transportation is one million, eight seventy-nine, two hundred. And then our capital costs of three oh four, six twenty-five, giving us a budget for FY twenty-three of thirty-four million, five forty-six, six thirty-eight. On the next page, you'll see the enrollment information. So you can see that West Bridgewater this year has an increase of sixteen students, so roughly thirty-three percent coming to Southeastern. So going from forty-eight to sixty-four students. And then obviously, the important part, what does that mean to the town of West Bridgewater? On the next page, you'll see that the assessment for FY twenty-three is eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight eighty-three. So that's an increase of one ninety-one, one sixty-three. And that's roughly thirty, just over thirty percent increase as well, so the correlation in students and increases is very similar. And as we know, you know, growth, wealth, population, students, that all plays a different factor. That's the assessment for FY twenty-three to the town.
So they've remained pretty much in line, then, the enrollment increase and the cost increase to the town?
This year, yeah, it is very similar. So if you look a couple of pages further on into the presentation, I'm not sure exactly what page it is, but it starts with FY twenty-three, Chapter seventy, appropri- appropriement of local contributions across school districts. You'll see that the town of West Bridgewater actually lost one student this year for FY twenty-three, and Southeastern picked up sixteen. So that, again, so that loss there affects some of the funding.
The ratios.
Obviously, so this year is very similar, the correlation to student population and increasing assessment, yes.
Good, thank you.
And there are a few more pages there that just show that, again, Southeastern's at minimal spending.
That hasn't changed.
Exactly. I've been coming here for the last ten years, at least, so that's where we're at. We do our best, again, for school spots, we try to keep it there and do what we can with what we have. Then there's just some, a few other pages, just, again, just right from the Department of that, based on the town and Southeastern Regional. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Just one, I think.
Yes.
I can't find it now, I thought I saw it earlier. A handful of new positions, I just wonder if you could quickly go over what those are.
So with enrollment being up, as we have a school year, and then obviously with the funding from the federal government, with S R two and S R three funding, and with all the social and emotional things going on in the schools now and the support we need for our students, we've increased a few new positions around social and emotional behavior and to support those students in the coming years.
And yet you maintain, what do they call it, foundational net school spending?
Net school spending foundation, correct, so. So our budget's up three point nine percent.
It's up, it's still, okay.
You know, again, and as well as the funding from S R two and S R three and the federal funds that we have around, again, those types of initiatives right now due to COVID, we're able to get those positions in place and get those students the support they need.
Did he say anything?
I was just curious, what, have the core trade options changed at all? I know you have plumbing, electrical.
Sure, they don't change, but what we do see, a shift, essentially, is which ones are more popular throughout, you know, like carpentry, electrical. Legal and protective has been a very big.
What is it?
Legal and protective in schools. Culinary is always a big take, so. The core options haven't really changed. We try to stay with what's in need in the industry. And we have our, you know, our meetings every year with our industry leaders, and they come in and help us kind of guide that. But we do see a shift in, you know, what students, there are different trades in the shift, and what's popular at the time, I guess you could say, and what's in need.
You do a great job.
We try. Yeah, so again, a big, a big, we just put in a performing arts center, I don't know if you've seen.
Yeah.
If you haven't had a chance, definitely, please come by, take a look. Performing arts have been huge, especially during the COVID now, kids getting back, they want to be with their friends, they want to be interactive, and they want to get back to what it was pre-COVID.
I understand that.
It is.
All right, anything else?
Nice and easy.
Oh, great, so, all right, so if there's any else, please just let me know, and thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. David, do you want to do yours?
Sure. So first is the moderator budget, budget eleven forty, it's level funded at five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The insurance has not been fully rated yet, but I'm budgeting a four percent increase based on what the broker has told us. Sailor waits and measures, the only change is the two percent in the salary line, so it's up about one point eight percent. Historical commission is only a fifteen hundred dollar budget, but again, level funded. Benefits is up about five percent, a little over, chiefly driven by healthcare, which we have been rated, that's going up, it was either three to four percent. And we received our retirement contribution, and I will let you know that in the retirement line, which is the second line, I budgeted four percent, I'm sorry, I budgeted seven percent, it's the other one. And the budget's due at the end of January, and the state just certified it, so I thought I did pretty good, and eight million dollars, I was off by twenty-six grand, but I do have to change it by twenty-six grand, which I'll do, but I just received that in. And then we also slipped in the capital budget report as well. You could see this has been the request from all the different departments. Mary representing the selectmen is on that committee. We just heard from everybody last, actually yesterday. And then we'll be voting on it next week, so we don't have any recommendations at this point, but this is really just an FYI to the board as to what the requests were.
Thank you. Any questions on those?
No.
I just need a minute for the.
These ones we'll see in a couple of weeks anyway, to actually throw it on.
I thought the total was higher for some reason, I'm actually glad to see that, okay. Well, is that sum at the totum, including water? Oh.
It's separated.
Oh, that's why. I'm, so the two of them together?
Yeah, definitely, the two of them together was two point four.
Okay, that makes more sense.
But obviously, there'll be two different revenue streams between the tax side and the water side, so we separated it out.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, David. Billy, are you waiting for anyone else, or are you good to go?
Uh, David, ready? Yes.
Okay, all right, we can wait. All right, meeting minutes of December first. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
And accept or review the meeting minutes of December fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
We have a request from the police chief to ratify Lisa Texera as a part-time police dispatcher. Is there a motion to approve that?
Uh, nobody comes in, I believe?
I don't believe she's coming in.
No, not for this, we know.
Okay, yeah, so moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. The recreational space met last night, conducted two interviews. Two of the three applicants got an interview for the design. C H A was chosen as the first choice. We have a contract in front of us, which they have already signed, I believe. And it's for an up to amount, up to seventy-five thousand for the initial design, master planning, cost estimating of the Lincoln Street project.
Did they just say they've never had a project in Massachusetts?
So they didn't have it as under C H A, because they bought a couple of firms and then merged them to Massachusetts. And so originally, that was going to be a concern from our bidding expert, but after meeting with them, we found out that they actually do. Right now, they're working on two projects in Massachusetts, so, it's just because they didn't actually own the firms at the time. And they're now based out of Boston in Ottawa.
So what do you need from us? Or is that?
A vote to approve the contract.
To approve the contract?
So we went out to bid, this money was already allocated at town meeting in June, I'm sorry, May. We went out to bid and town council put together the contract as to what is that they have to sign, so they have to sign it as part of the bidding package. So there, so then what you do is you then you interview them to make sure that they meet all the qualifications that the town is looking for. And that's why the committee then chose C H A, we checked all of their references, they were clearly the favorite last night. And so right now, yes, you would just be approving the ratification of hiring them. They'll start within a week, they will then work through the next seven to eight months, put together all of the details they need to put together, whether or not we can do one field, two fields, basketball courts, pickleball courts, those types of things. They'll come up with a couple of different designs, they'll also come up with cost estimates at that point. We'll then bring it back, we plan on having a couple of public forums, solidify down to one or two choices that you guys as the selectmen will choose, and then we'll have to call a town meeting and see which ones the town wants and what they want to fund. But somebody has to design it and engineer it first, including the need for a septic system, that'll be their first decision as to where that goes, because that's gonna make some decisions as to where the courts can go as well. So the vote tonight is to ask to ratify C H A as being the chosen firm, and that way they can start their work.
Any other questions, comments, or motion?
Who was, who was present when they went through the two, two bits, two offers?
Yeah, we had two interviews last night.
Okay.
So there's ten members on the recreational space committee, um, eight of us.
Okay, so eight, eight members did the vetting, okay, so I'll.
Yeah, Anthony was one, and Fomanau was one of the others.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
All right, we have two FinCom reserve transfers, one from the D P W and one from the fire department. David, what are these for?
Sure, so D P W, the last year and this year, they have overspent their equipment hire line basically for tree removal, with all the storms that we get, we obviously have a lot of trees. So we've increased their budget going forward to try to mitigate this going in the, going forward in future years. But right now, they have no more money, the springtime is usually when they do tree work, so we've been looking at transfer thirty thousand dollars from the FinCom reserve in order for them to do their spring tree work. The second request is from the fire department. The fire department oversees the fire, the fuel depot, which is located at the public safety building, all municipal buildings, whether diesel or gasoline fill up there. And earlier in the year, a fuel pump broke, so nobody was able to fuel up. We had to secure funding, you know, they had to buy it. We only allocate seven hundred and fifty dollars in their entire line, and that seven hundred and fifty dollars is what they spend every year for maintenance of that project, of the fuel tanks. So it cost a thousand eighty-two dollars, they're running in deficit, so we're looking to transfer that thousand eighty-two dollars back into their line so they can continue to maintain the pumps for the year.
Any comments or motion?
Yep, so moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
David, do you want to do your report?
Yeah, just, you know, some good news, it looks like our most recent readings of the PFAS readings, all the tanks came in below. Typically, it's three at a forehead, but the fourth one, the last couple of months have been trending lower, so that's really a good sign. And the last is, is that next week, there will be a candidate tonight for everybody who's running in the election, the election is on April ninth. There are two contested races, one for Board of Assessors, the other one for Board of Selectmen, so there'll be a thirty-minute debate for either one of them. The debate is at six thirty, and it's at the high school chimney, at the high school auditorium next week.
All right, thank you, David.
Will that also be broadcast?
Yep.
Excellent.
You guys ready?
You guys good?
Yeah, yeah.
You can be fine, obviously.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, well, thank you for having us tonight, Chairman Sandson, great. So we're gonna present our budget to you guys, and obviously, we're FinCom next week, but I wanted to say a little something first as far as, we started a new little bit of a process this year, Mr. Gaby started, where we got involved with FinCom and you guys maybe, you know, show the school budget a little, make it a little bit easier for people to understand, ask more questions, so that it's not just, you know, one night, you know, we're here with the selectmen for twenty minutes and then FinCom, and there's a lot of questions, so. Mr. Yeo, Mrs. Dragonetti put a lot of time in, along with Mrs. Grant and Mr. Bodwell, meeting with the various FinCom people and answering some questions. So we're hoping that, you know, we've made some strides that way, but yet, you know, we're obviously still gonna make our presentation if there's any questions that you guys have moving forward. We're here, if there's something that comes up after tonight, we're here, we're not going anywhere. But, you know, it's very important to us, I mean, you know, the kids are probably our biggest asset in the town, you know, good school department, and, you know, we're, you know, doing really well. Mr. Bodwell's, you know, two years into this, heading into his third, and I think we're in the right direction, and, you know, we think a lot of the asks are not above and beyond, there are things that we do need. We're not looking to pad anything or do anything, we're just looking for stuff that we need. And I know that we do, you know, have some reservations, Mrs. Dragonetti has said that she thinks we might be kind of light in our asks, so, you know, we want to just keep all our options open and just keep, you know, getting, you know, what we can get for the kids of the town, you know, so. Mr. Bodwell, the presentation, Mrs. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Dun, thank you for this opportunity. Again, we presented at the school meeting, we had a presentation, we put it up on the website, we have a presentation tonight. So hopefully, it gives you some more information, if you have questions, because there's a lot of information in those presentations, just again, feel free to ask. We want to be as transparent and upfront and explain as much as we can as we go through this process. You know, we're, we're a mission-driven budget. You can see the, the mission of the West Bridgewater Public Schools, we're working together with home and community, provide our students and staff a safe environment, which to acquire the knowledge, skills, and values needed for success in a diverse and global society in the first century. So that drives what we do, and again, this is a needs-based budget. And when you look at our budget, these, it really works in a circular motion. We build the budget looking at our district priorities, looking at our school priorities, looking at our school improvement plans, looking at our N E A S C recommendations. We have educator goals, administrative goals, I have goals, that we work together. We always look at the social and emotional needs of our students and our staff, and clearly, we need to look at the achievement. We want to make sure that we're achieving at the highest level possible. So all those work, and you have built our budget. And, you know, we feel the past couple of years that we've worked really hard to build a budget that's been essential in terms of the things that we've needed. We feel that we've been a little bit reactive due to the COVID crisis, and we've had to fill some holes. And our goal moving forward, though, is to become more proactive and to be more strategic in what we add into our budget. We feel we're starting to catch up to the area schools in terms of staffing, we want to get to the place where we are making sure we're giving our kids the best opportunity for success in all the classrooms.
So in creating this presentation, we really kind of took the approach, I know it's easy to go line by line and go over the many, many pages of the budget, but in creating this presentation, we really kind of focused it on what our mission is, which Mr. Bodwell just went over, what our goal is, which is mission-driven, and then what the problem is and the solutions. And so our solutions really are, you know, integrated throughout this presentation, and in the end, we talk about exactly what resources we need to solve the problem. I know we talked a bit about P P E last year, so I won't, you know, I won't drag us to the weeds about per pupil expenditure, but I think it's important to kind of revisit this, that P P E is how much a district spends per student. And this is a, this is an excellent measurement tool because it compares apples to apples. You can look at all four hundred and four districts in the state and see what each district is spending on their students. And so when we think about investment and we think about buying a car or buying a house, I'll use a car as an example. You know, we're not asking for a Mercedes budget here, but we're certainly looking for more than a used Kia. And when we think about investing, we think about our children as our most important investment. And, I mean, these, these are the people who are going to decide what happens with us when we're old and, you know, how well they're doing in life. And so we really need to focus on how much we're spending on our kids. So again, this is kind of a repeat from last year's presentation. The new information from fiscal year twenty-one is not available yet, we will share it when it becomes available, it's all from the DESI website. But when you look at, and in these next few slides, I'm gonna kind of go in like the layers of an onion, and we're gonna start with Massachusetts. When you look at the four hundred and four districts in the state, for fiscal year nineteen, West Bridgewater, West Bridgewater was twenty-third from the bottom. So there were only twenty-two districts that spent less per student than we did. For fiscal year twenty, we actually declined to eighth from the bottom. Now, this is all of our expenditures, and yes, it does include our school choice students. So it's all, I think we're up to, what, fourteen hundred students now? Yeah, so it does, at the time, it wasn't fourteen hundred, but, you know, the new numbers will include every single student that we service. But it's important to see that this really is comparing every student in the state. So zooming in a little bit closer, when you look at southeastern Massachusetts, these are sixty districts on the South Shore. For fiscal year twenty, I'm sorry, for fiscal year nineteen, we were fifth from the bottom, and then in fiscal year twenty, again, we saw that, we saw that dip where we then dropped to fourth in the South Shore region. And then looking a little bit closer at the towns that surround us, you know, it's, it's nice to compare us to the Bridgewater's, but it's also important to compare us to Broughton, because it's, it's, you know, to the north of us. And I know when we compare to Broughton, we are comparing apples to oranges, because Broughton gets a lot of funding from the state. But we also want to compare to Easton, because Easton is what we strive towards, we really want to give our students the best. But even if we took Easton and Broughton out of the picture, you'd see that over time, our per pupil expenditure is actually declining compared to the Bridgewater's. So this kind of breaks it down based on what our P P E gets for, for us. And you can see, you know, when you look down the column of the categories to compare, you see that it's people, it's bodies, it's teaching positions, it's professionals, it's special education. It's the resources that we need to provide direct services and to provide more than an adequate education for our students.
So now we start to look at what the solutions are, they really focus on three primary areas that support our student needs. One is additional staffing. So we've put into this budget additional staffing for this year that we've, we need to assume, because over time, our S R money will run dry, so we need to make that move. So in the budget this year, we do have a special ed teacher, two behavior techs, and two one-on-one instructional assistants who service students directly. But we've also added other positions through S R, such as the mental health positions, additional special ed teachers, related services, and English language teacher, and we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. Clearly, in our budget, we're a people business, the majority of our budget is staffing, so we need to look at retaining the highest quality teachers that we can. So we need to have competitive salaries. When we look at, we have COLA, cost of living adjustment, as well as the steps and track, steps being the years of service and the track being their education that they have earned. And then special education, a small number of our students, we have sixteen students at this moment who are out of district place, but that adds up to about two million dollars of our budget, so it's a huge percent. You will see in the budget, though, the number, the increase has dropped over the past three years, so we're asking for less money. But the thing is, that's very variable, that could change literally tomorrow, we could have them move in. So it's, it's nice that it's down to eighty-five thousand as an ask in terms of an increase, but we could have them move in or move out, so it could fluctuate either way. So again, we're banking still on using a lot of S R funds for this year, but we're trying to lessen that cliff at the end by trying to add some into the budget now. So we have the services we need, we get the staff we need, but then when S R runs out in FY twenty-four, or maybe it's in twenty-five, then we have to decrease that gap and add appropriate staff.
Mark, what do you think the exposure is in twenty twenty-four? For those positions, what will the exposure be?
It'll be about two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Okay.
That's as of right now, that's what we've looked at, that's what we have into the S R three budget for next year.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a graph that shows additional staffing and the funding source. So let's see up at the top, the positions that we've added into the FY twenty-three budget, that we feel are truly essential. We have other funding in the middle, the S R funds, and the combination S R and grant funding, reasons that's a. Reason that's a combination is this year, we were able to hire a middle senior high school social worker using a grant. We're not sure if that grant will become available for that use this coming year, so if not, we'll have to take that out of the ESR funds. And then, we've, district funded by moving some positions around, we've been able to add these part-time certified OT assistant or COTA. So, again, these are some of the needs that we have and the funding sources associated with them.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about those needs because, you know, and you don't have to go back, but when you look at all of those positions on the right, with the exception of the EL teacher, every single position is a special education position or related services, speech, OT, PT, school psychologist. And, but we do have that EL teacher on there, so I'm going to talk a little bit about why these are necessary and why you see this increase, so you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So, these are English language learners in WB schools, and you can see the trend line is really rising here. The demographic of our town is changing. It's fabulous because, you know, we are seeing more diversity. But I know that if, you know, I think about my own kid coming home and saying, you know, we had a new move-in today, and they, they speak Portuguese and that's all they speak. And that, that's happening, that's happening in just about every class in the district. And so, when, we're going to talk a little bit more about chapter 70 in a moment, but when you look at English language learners, there is a higher cost associated because they not only need to learn the curriculum, but they need to learn the language. And we are required by law to provide them a free, appropriate public education. And so adding that EL teacher is essential because there is no way that they are going to be able to access the curriculum if we are not first teaching them to become proficient in the language. EL teachers have service needs, there are a minimum number of minutes that they have to provide EL students depending on the level of proficiency that they have. Eventually, what happens with an ELL student is they become what's called formerly English lang, a former English language learner, and they no longer, they're still tracked through the system, but they don't require that direct service. The fellow students are not included in this chart, so these are just students as of the end of the year that are requiring direct minutes. And one of the challenges that, that is run into with an EL teacher is that, or with EL students, is that they are across the district, they're in all four schools. And so, it's not as simple as hiring, you know, someone for each school, it's someone that has to travel, that has to manage the schedule, and so, you know, it becomes more challenging to meet the needs of the students across the district when they are spread out so wide.
How many different languages are we teaching?
We're working with students with many different languages, could be Haitian Creole, could be Portuguese, Spanish, there's, we also have Sub-Andarin, so it's, they're working with them in their native language.
I remember at one time, there were some, some unique languages we were teaching, and it was, it was students that had EL needs, and it was hard to find an instructor who was skilled.
Right, and they're, and they're working with them in, in English, so it's, it's working with them and the families as well, so we need to hire translation services as well.
Thank you.
So, I know Mr. Bodwell spoke a little bit about the special education and how variable the out-of-district line is. So, some of you know me, I know Mary knows me, that I work in special education, so I can speak to this. I work in a special education classroom, a substantially separate classroom, every single day. And the thing is, if any one of my students in my classroom moved to West Bridgewater, they would immediately be outplaced. And that's because, as it stands right now, we don't have the services that are required to actually provide a free and appropriate public education for these students. And between the ages of 3 and 22, we are required to provide them an education. And so, you know, we've spoken in the past, I know Mr. Bodwell has spoken about building capacity, and if you go back a couple of slides and you look at those positions that we're adding, and you, you look at adding the middle senior high school learning center teacher, that is what we're trying to do by building capacity so that eventually this out-of-district number is decreasing significantly. As you can see on the bottom here, depending on the, or actually about midway down, depending on the students' needs, they could be outplaced at any number of placements. There are public school programs which are a little bit more affordable, as you can see, between $35,000 and $45,000. East Bridgewater does have services that we do not provide, so we do have some students that go over to East Bridgewater. Collaborative schools are also available, between $60,000 and $80,000. And then there are non-public private schools which are more, more specialized, there are more specialized services there for students who are more severe to profound in nature. But again, this could change at any moment, depending on who moves into the district, who starts at age 3. And so, it's, it's frustrating because it is the largest variable, but I think the best thing that we can do is continue to build that capacity within the district so that we are able to educate a greater number of students without having to pay for that out-of-district placement.
This, this slide talks about the, the funding for our student needs, so it really just breaks down the school contributions, the town contributions, which consists of the chapter 70 funding, which is designated in the red, and the towns portion in the yellow, but then again, our school contributions in the blue. So, you know, we're looking at a total ASCE from the town of $15,258,937 plus the school contributions, which we've gone over before, we'll just, we'll break that down a little bit in a future slide. So, what this means, and it's not meant to be in small print, but it is the, it's a, it's a representation of an increase of $784,667, and we're 5.42% over the last year. And we'll talk a little bit in the future about like the increase in step, chapter 70, as well as some of them. This breaks down where that increase comes from, so I think it's important to look at what the, what makes up the different increases. The additional staff that I talked about, which includes the additional special ed teacher, two behavior techs and two and a half, 2.5 101 IAs equals $175,000 or 1.2%. The teaching services, which is our estimated COLA, step and track is over $122,000 or 2.9%, and our special education, the out-of-district cost going up an estimated $85,000. Now, when I spoke of that being less, this year in FY '21, there was an increase of $266,000, FY '22 was $182,500, and now we're down to $85,000. Again, a very variable number for us. So then it breaks down to other increases, which one of, a major one which is reflected on the cover sheet is two additional students who have applied and we believe will go to Norfolk Aggie, which is $55,000. Then an additional net increases in the other, all the other lines combined are $45,000. So, that's what makes up that difference. If the students did not attend, if we did not have additional enrollments or we had graduations and the Norfolk Aggie line was, stayed the same, then there would be a net decrease of about $9,600 in all of the other lines combined. So clearly, our major additions of what we're looking for are our teaching services and adding additional staff, and then a small increase in the special ed. This, this series of pie charts just shows where we have been and somewhat where we're going using the numbers over the past three years. We've always shown this chart, at least I've long since looked at some of these budget presentations, the averages have been, town contributes about 60%, chapter 70 is equal to about 25%, and our school contributions about 15%. Over the past three years from FY '21 up to FY '23, we've seen a significant increase in our chapter 70 fund, which is great for the town, it provides more money, we know it goes to the town. And therefore, there's been a corresponding decrease in the amount that the town itself has had to put in. So dropping from around that 60% over three years down to 56.2%. That's because, again, the chapter 70 money has increased up to, or at 30%, but to 25.
So, I'm not going to go crazy on this, but I do think it's really important to understand chapter 70 a little bit more because, you know, when you look at that previous pie chart where you see the town contribution decreasing because you think, oh, great, we're getting more money from chapter 70. However, chapter 70 is a very complicated formula that essentially boils down to student needs. The state calculates our foundation budget based on EL students, which we talked about, special education students, low-income students who require more services just simply because they're economically disadvantaged, I'm not going to get into the, you know, the research there, guidance and psychological services, and then they account for inflation as well. And so they look at the number of students we have in the district, and then they calculate it out. And that becomes the foundation budget, which is the light blue line and the orange line. This is the number that is what is an equitable minimum. And I don't know what you, but I didn't move to West Bridgewater for, for an equitable minimum for an adequate education. So, most districts actually spend over that minimum, which, you know, we do in West Bridgewater. The top line there is more of like a teal color, you can see on the chart, there's Lynn on the left, Newton on the right. Lynn spends close to their foundation budget, they get quite a bit of money from chapter 70, and the town yield is, it's small. And so, it is not expected that Lynn would, would contribute more over that spending, that minimum requirement. But then you see a district like Newton, which we know, Newton provides excellent services and excellent education, and you see that their spending over is much more. So it's really about, you know, we fund things that we care about, and, and I think that it's really important that we think about exactly what kind of education we want to provide our students because if we continue to shrink that piece of the pie, we're getting closer and closer to the bar chart on the left, and yes, this is drastic. I didn't choose these districts, it's just the example that was in the chapter 70, you know, the, the write-up. But that would be the direction that we trend towards if we're not continuing to spend at the same rate that our, our chapter 70 is increasing. So, this is West Bridgewater, over time, you can see, again, our foundation budget is the light blue and the orange, and it is expected that we should be spending more. That maroon is school contribution, and Mr. Bodwell will speak a little bit more about school choice and all of the grants and circuit breaker and the revolving accounts. But that is what is provided, or that is what is included in the budget over what is required that is being generated within the school. And then you can see that town contribution on the top that is really what is, is the tax burden on the town and what is, you know, being spent over that foundation budget. And you can see, again, it is decreasing over time. So here's chapter 70 stating West Bridgewater, again, it speaks to the demographic of our town. If our chapter 70 is being calculated based on low income, or what's called, what's considered high need students, low income, EL, guidance and psychological services, and special education, you can see that we are increasing. Now, for fiscal year '23, we actually saw a quite a large increase, and some of that is due to the demographic of our town, but it is also due to the state budget. The state budget was increased chapter 70 this year by $485 million. And so, our piece of that pie has increased, but we are seeing the largest increase in 10 years at $744,000 over what we received last year. So, and much of that does account for inflation, but again, they reviewed the chapter 70 formula and said, hey, you know what, we need to send districts more money for EL students, for special education students. And so, again, we need to think about, are we spending the minimum or do we want to grow with what's expected so that we can continue to maintain that level of education that we're providing?
Chapter 70 is the same in all districts, it's based on the facts that Mrs. Dragonetti talked about, but a district such as Easton is receiving the statement of which is $30 per pupil, and we're up around $700 on average for this year per pupil, so there can be a wide variance in the amounts. Again, we look at school contributions, which for us is over $2.4 million that we're putting into the budget, that a majority of it is through school choice, we budget 1.5 million through school choice, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Our circuit breaker, which is money we get back for special ed students when the costs incurred are over $45,000, so we're estimating that amount. Our revolving accounts such as our athletics, our preschool, and our surround care make up about 11% of the school contributions, and then special education grants that we receive make up about 13%. So those are all ways we're taking in money and using it within our budget.
Do you see preschool going to no cost at some point?
No. I mean, it is for the, the students of special ed, but we are playpals, we need to continue to fund that, yes. I think it's still pretty reasonable, we did increase last year, but it's still pretty reasonable.
We're right in line with other towns, possibly even a little bit lower, but there's been, other than at the state level, very little discussion in any of the districts about not charging.
So, okay, so my question really was on the state, do you see it being mandatory at some point? No?
No, we haven't heard.
Okay.
And then, school choice, this just, this graph will show you the enrollment of West Bridgewater, which has been pretty consistent, especially over the past four years, but the numbers that we accept are, we are not consistent. What we're doing is we're filling gaps that we have, and I'll be honest with you, with the students that we've had moving in daily, coming in and registering, it makes me nervous that the number of students that are growing, and this is before we're talking about developments and so forth, it just seems, and, you know, people want to come to West Bridgewater, they're finding homes, they're finding rental property. So, this year we have 23 seniors graduating, so we want to fill those spots, and then we're going to fill whatever spots we can. But again, we're going to be really cautious knowing what's, what is coming, we want to make sure that we have appropriate-sized classrooms. And again, with more homes coming, that 1.5 million for every student, that's $5,000, every student we can't take and drop down from that number of, say, 285, it's, it's going, that, that cost will have to be covered somewhere, so it's, it's, it's scary.
That hasn't increased in a long time, right? That $5,000, it seems like it's been there as long as I've been.
Correct. There has not increased at all.
Can you see that happening?
I do not. And, and the good news is, our applicants are strong, we average $140 a year. People are calling daily to find out whether we're making decisions, but we will make those decisions until we have more information. So then we look at, you know, this is just the big picture in terms of the town, I think it's just, we want to, so we know we're a department, we work well, I think, with the other departments and with the town. We know that, you know, the school budget is 38.6% of the overall town budget for FY ' '22, and you can see how that's broken up with the chapter 70 increase from FY '22, and then leaving 26.4% funded by the town. So, again, we, we want to make sure we're working with the town, we're, we're being a team player, but there are needs that we have and want them to be met. And then finally, looking ahead, I remember presenting a slide similar to this last year, we talked about it earlier, there is a need that we're at, we're providing these services, these teaching services outside of the ASCE, the FY '23 budget. The town, we know, has received the ARCO money, which is great because I think the town has needs as well as we do, and we've used the ESR money. Some of the things that we've used ESR money are ESR 1, 2, and 3 for, existing staffing, it's been discussed, technology, buying laptops for teachers, Chromebooks for students, we focused on learning gaps by hiring instructional tutors and English language tutors, we've filled some instructional and curriculum needs by purchasing curriculum in certain areas, especially EL, and some diagnostic testing through STAR and Freckle. We had been able to fill some positions of programs for social, emotional, and academic skills such as hiring social worker interns, and the family success partnership, whose work is families in need, and we funded last year the summer, a summer wild academy for students who were at risk and need extra time to fill those learning gaps. But down below, you'll see, these are some other staffing needs that are not in the budget but are going to be funded through ESR, a full-time English language teacher, part-time special educator, they're half, excuse me, they're half-time now, so you'd fill in the other half, a part-time speech and language pathologist, part-time school psychologist, team chair, and the middle senior high school social worker. So that adds up to the $218,000 that we use for ESR, but we know there'll be that cliff eventually, so we're lessening the cliff of the 175, but we have an additional cliff. We did not want to push that all forward. And again, there's some hope to push the ESR to FY '25, so if we can keep pushing things and spend the ESR money, we'll do it as long as we can.
So, you know, as a member of the school committee, as a member of the budget subcommittee, I've gone over this budget line by line. I've gone over this budget line by line twice. And Kathy's chuckling, because I did go, I asked questions about every $3,000 increase, and every $3,000 decrease, and, you know, I did go very thoroughly over this budget with a fine to its comb. And so I truly, genuinely say that on the behalf of the students and the staff in the West Bridgewater School District, we ask for your support of this fiscally responsible budget. It does meet the needs of our students. You know, I know Mr. Bodwell said before, it's, if there aren't any wants and wishes here. We're really, if we're being honest, we're filling gaps. We're filling holes that have been there for a little bit, you know, for a while. Fortunately, ESSR funds are able to kind of bridge those gaps, but we need to consider that it's, that's temporary.
What does a social worker do in a school?
We, they will meet with students, they'll make connections with families, they set up family partnerships, provide them resources. So we did have one full-time school psychologist at the middle, senior high school. That person resigned, so we hired a social worker. And then we also got a grant, and we hired an additional social worker. And we found it to be very successful, working with our kids and our families.
All right, thank you.
I think it's important to note, too, that a social worker is available to all students, and especially when we talk about the social-emotional crisis and coming back, you know, a social-emotional crisis that was there before COVID. And now, we really are seeing significant social-emotional needs, especially at the middle and high school level. And so, having a social worker there that is able to provide the necessary services so that those kids can get back into the classroom, keeps them from an out-of-district placement. It keeps them from what's called a 45-day placement, where they are not socially, emotionally stable enough to access a curriculum here in our schools. We end up having to pay for that. So a social worker really is worth their weight in gold in being able to keep these kids in their seats.
From a quality of education perspective, I know, I think our per pupil spending is low, but how are we doing with those students? I'm looking for the quality versus the quantity, as far as graduation levels, going on for continued education. Are our students successful?
Our students are successful. They're going off to college, they're graduating. We have a low dropout rate. So, and those are, those are bars we want to continue to reach, I think.
Where do we fall within the 400 and something communities that we analyzed, as far as our graduation rates?
I don't have that data. I mean, I'm assuming we're pretty high, knowing our dropout rate has been very low over the years.
I graduated, I mean, it's up over 95%.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. We're even higher than that. In most cases, over a four-year cohort, we don't, a lot of years, we do not have any dropouts. I worry about those students, but I also worry about the social-emotional needs of all of our kids.
Right.
And who are struggling. So I think our teachers and our administrators continue to do an outstanding job.
I agree, yeah.
I mean, personally, I couldn't thank the teachers of West Bridgewater enough. I got a senior graduating from Providence College this year. I got a sophomore in college down at Salve Regina. They're striving, you know, being out of this town. They do well in all types of circumstances. So, you know, the teachers, the atmosphere at the school has just, you know, been wonderful for my children.
I have two grandchildren at home that are very happy in West Bridgewater schools. And I get to experience what they're learning when they're doing their homework, and hearing them talk about what they're doing at school, and you're doing a great job.
There's a few of us here that graduated from West Bridgewater, and I'd say we're doing all right.
You're doing all right.
Make sure we mention how well we're all doing, and sticking around and leading our town. So there's something to be said for that.
And I don't, you know, I didn't graduate from West Bridgewater, and my oldest is in fifth grade, but I cannot, so I don't have the vast experience that Bill has with all the teachers, but I cannot honestly say. I've never met a more hard-working group of individuals than the teachers we have in West Bridgewater. Truly.
I love about your presentation, how instead of talking about what the problem areas, which we all know we talk about, but you also talked about a strategy on how to minimize those costs in the future. And that's not something I had heard before. So I want to make sure I mention that I appreciate that, that you are trying to keep more students in district instead of out-of-district, and that you're also really focused on the social and emotional well-being. I know I personally was very much for a mental health coordinator, counselor, whatever that position needs to be. Just with my own three kids, before COVID, I could see needs. But now, after COVID, just trying to see them play with their friends, they just don't have the skills that some of us have from going through normal elementary school.
Absolutely. Now imagine what middle schoolers look like. It's scary.
It's terrifying.
And I appreciate that you saying that. And I also, Mrs. Dragonite said it before, but building capacity is really important to us. We have constant conversations with our administrative team, with our director of student services, of what can we do to help keep kids in district, not for the financial cost, but because it's the best place for them to be? And what can we do, what supports can we give them on a day-to-day basis? Can we put in place, get those people there to help them in the short term, but also in the long term?
And then like grow up in their community. They make those long-term relationships that some of us have from being here. I mean, it's a win-win, so. No, I appreciated your presentation. Thank you very much.
So I think, I do have another question. It's a little bit of a long-term question, but you're familiar with all of the development that's happening, especially on Lincoln Street. Understanding where we are with school choice, our student, have you done any forecasts on potential population increase of students, and what we will need to do to be prepared, as far as, do we need new schools?
Well, part of what we're working on submitting to the MSBA is a statement of interest for a new building. Now, what they want to, they're going to build the building on a design enrollment, which they did at the middle, senior high school, which was 625 students, and we've already exceeded that. They don't build it for choice. So, the problem is, we have the capacity in our buildings now. The unfortunate thing is, we don't, we don't have the choice students. So it's unlikely they'll say, well, we're going to give, we'll build you a new building if that was the case, and it's going to exceed, so we have the new students who are living in town, plus the choice. So that's the unfortunate part, is the choice students will probably, most likely, go away over time. So we have not done any studies. You know, we know as much, you know, as we can at this point, but we don't know how many homes. I haven't been informed in terms of lock and stain and so forth. But it's a scary proposition for a school when you have, you know, classes, you know, four classes a grade, and we have bubble classes of five. But we know in our current schools, we can't support all five sections. And we also know, realistically, any kind of building project is, you know, seven, eight, 10 years out.
That's why I was asking, because I don't think you have seven or eight years out to start.
No, I mean, so, yeah, so it's something we're going to have to continue to worry about and to problem-solve. And that starts with us, in the short term, you know, really scrutinizing how many students we allow into the elementary schools for school choice. And then also, going from the seventh grade and going into ninth grade. Again, that starts that funding deficit, that's the unfortunate part. But we'd rather assume that somehow than get over proud of our classes.
So, did, so are you going to start limit, limiting school choice at the elementary level, understanding that we have a population increase for the schools right around the corner?
Yeah, that's something we will have to consider, absolutely. Because it wouldn't be wise, because once they're in, we own them until they choose to leave, or they graduate.
That's a big project down there.
Yes.
Thank you. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You mentioned Easton a couple of times, that we strive to be Easton. What do they have that we don't?
Easton graduate here. Well, Easton didn't graduate, but went to school in Easton.
You didn't graduate?
No, no, and I went to Stonehill, too. The 3.4 GPA.
Support, I think their support staff, that's what we're lacking a lot in terms of our special ed, our speech and language pathologist. They also have a high academic rigor, and they do well, so I think we're, they're working to be on par with that as well.
I can't compare my education to my grandchildren's. That was many, many years ago, I went to Easton. But I'm impressed with what they're learning in West Bridgewater schools, and the level of education. I just may not have been that good a student background, I don't know. But they're doing, they're thriving, they're doing very well.
Any other questions or comments? No? You guys have anything else?
We're good, and we'll plug our, we had our first unified basketball game today, which is unified with special ed and peer students, and we played Pembroke. And it was a wonderful game, and it had to be 300.
Oh, it was fantastic, yes.
It was a wonderful event, it really was.
Great.
The school and the kids that came from the, you know, the middle school kids, some of the teachers were there.
Howard School Kids were a part of it as well.
And, you know, the support, there was Pembroke Middle School, principal, vice-principal came over. It was a wonderful afternoon over at the high school. And the West Bridgewater kids are going to go over to Pembroke next week. And then in two weeks, they're going to have a little jamboree here on, I think it's on a Thursday afternoon. So that if, you know, anybody's around on a Thursday afternoon, we're going to have a unified little jamboree for the kids.
Oh, that's awesome. I like that.
Unselfishness, which you don't sometimes see.
Oh, my gosh, they were passing up every shot. Future NBA players, because they were passing the ball, not because they weren't good. They were passing the ball.
It was really nice, too, to hear, you know, there were a lot of Pembroke, a lot of West Bridgewater, but everyone cheered, no matter who made a shot.
It was a great afternoon.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We're just kind of wrapping up.
The only thing we have left on the agenda is public comment period.
It was for, it was for...
Was it for the?
The street.
The street, right? The street farm road, and is that what you guys?
Oh, planning board's downstairs.
Thank you.
Something's going on.
Hold on a second. The planning board was canceled tonight, it's next Wednesday.
Seriously?
It's next Wednesday. It is going to be downstairs, but it's next Wednesday. If you want to go down there and verify, you know, but that's the notice that you see earlier.
Oh. How would we have gotten notified?
It's on the website, so.
We got like two certified letters.
Yeah, because it's a public hearing, that's why. So, but check with them, go downstairs, if nobody's there, it's going to be next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Have a good night.
No, you're very welcome.
I thought they came just for the public comment period.
No, we have nothing to say. Nice to meet you.
All right. Executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically the Department of Employment Assistance, Determination, and Magliar Diddy versus the town of West Bridgewater, since in my opinion as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Is there a motion?
Subway.
Second.
Enroll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes.
Kenan, yes, we're now at executive session.